I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order at seven o'clock PM on Monday, October 21st. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, free, civil, and justice for all.
Quick introductions, start with Andrew.
Andrew Olward.
Matthew Millie.
Richard Remus.
Jennifer Gill.
Peter Crusautown Administrator.
Okay, so, new business, discussion of former church property at 113 Alvin Street. So, I don't know that we have had any actions yet.
No.
So, this is just more awareness that there's this, you all have your little maps, there's a space that's not part of the original parcel for purchase, but there's septic and other things that they want access to. So, I went to the meeting last week. And then you owners seem very friendly and excited about being a part of the community. But they didn't, they said they may come to a meeting to talk to us about this, but right, I don't think we have any action.
Should we pull out the chairs?
No, okay. So, I don't know if anyone has any comments or concerns.
So, Peter, you fact-checked this statement on number three, paragraph three.
Right, so that's what we have at this stage, and also council looked back into the records. And, you know, as you know, we've communicated with the property, now property owners, former council
Right.
and their architect and their surveyor. And in all of those situations recommended they go back to the church prior to the transaction, transaction took place. I don't know that they got any information or relief or additional records that we, that the church might have been able to find. But so, as it stands right now, the town owns the thirty-three thousand approximately square feet that was approved back in nineteen ninety-two, the Board of Select, the town meeting vote authorized the Board of Selectmen to sell the property, that thirty-three thousand square feet, which includes what they call overoccupied parcel of about seven thousand square feet where is located some of the septic system of the church and some of the parking of the church and Hope Building or something. That seven thousand square feet is town-owned property from all the records that we can find. And there are no, you know, and what's on record at the Worcester Registry of Deeds and so forth. So, the question is how to resolve that, and you can see that in speaking to council, there's, you know, if the town, the town has no obligation to do anything. But if the town wishes to do something, because I think that at least overoccupied parcel is a a piece that they need to resolve to be able to do what they want to do with the, with the property for events and whatnot. And it influences their septic system approval and things like that. So, they haven't come forward to say what specifically they would suggest be done. And so, as Jen says, there's no action to be taken at this stage. But the resolution of this issue for them does rest with the Board of Selectmen. And is subject, depending on what path you go down, might require a town meeting vote to approve you to do something. And if it's sell the parcel to them for a price, if it's in excess of thirty-five thousand, it has to go to auction.
So, the last page here, page six in this packet here.
Which is the drawing?
No, I, no, I don't have a drawing. This is, this vote was, the town voted and it was recorded in the nineteen ninety-two annual report, section five. So, the town voted on it.
The vote, the town voted to authorize
The Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen to sell the parcel. It didn't obligate the Board of Selectmen to do that, and so there's no
So, there's no records of the Board of Selectmen taking action.
Correct, correct.
We have no way of digging through these archived records.
We, it has been researched quite extensively by the town clerk and, you know.
So, it's, it's possible that the Board of Selectmen just chose to take no action.
Yes.
So, no money, oh, sorry, no money exchanged hands.
Not that we can tell.
Do we still have, those meetings were recorded back then, do we have those recordings still?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
Oh, nice.
Sure, you can go to the table.
Jason Millie, five ten Chelsa Hill Road, would a lease agreement with them require a town vote? Like, something
So, the, an action of a license agreement, which is effectively a lease agreement, is a possibility that does not require. But according to council, it's something you would do in a short-term basis, effectively, until the town meeting.
So, technically, you could do a lease for a dollar for that seven thousand square feet per year.
Well, the value is, you know, yet to be
Landlocked, right?
Determined.
Is it a landlocked piece?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, do we know, we're paying taxes on it now?
We own it, the town owns it.
So, we're not paying taxes. So, if we agreed to lease it to them, that would be taxable.
That's one way to look at it.
Property. That's it, my two cents.
Okay.
Thanks all.
Thank you.
So, is there like a statute of limitations on this town vote? I mean, would it go back to town vote again to authorize the Board of Selectmen?
So, I checked with council, right, and yes, you would need to revote that.
So, that'd be the springtime?
Yeah.
Correct.
Thirty years.
Yes.
It's thirty years ago.
I know, so we can't rely on a town vote thirty years ago to take action now, right?
Correct, correct.
So, that gets added to the warrant for springtime.
It would.
It would require two-thirds vote.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Quick question, is this land attached to other town properties?
Yes.
So, is that still unconnected, or how is that?
So, it, you know, it's the land, it's the town's land.
Between the school and the church.
And the church.
So, all of that land is town property?
Yes.
Okay.
So, would we want to get this appraised before the town meeting, so that we have a value to stick on it?
So, yes, and you have an executive session where you, in tonight's agenda, where you can discuss that type of thing further, right?
I mean, it would stink to punish them to pay, well, no, I mean, I think it would work out right. In today's market value, right, if we got an appraisal on it now, probably no difference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, say one more thing.
Yes, of course.
So, I was in the planning board meeting and had the discussions with them. Peter, you mentioned something about being able to do something on a short-term basis, just because they're looking to work. This would require us waiting till what, April?
Yeah.
And then some? So, if there's something we can do temporarily, because it's holding up their permits or their approvals.
Okay.
They closed on the property, right?
Oh, yes, they own it, yes.
They own it?
Yep.
I guess, so, but they haven't, like, these are things we're discussing, they haven't actually asked us to do anything. So, once they ask us, then we can have that conversation.
How creative the problem was, they weren't sure how to approach it type of thing, so.
Yeah.
Last two cents.
Okay.
Makes sense.
I've heard that before.
You can come up as many times as you want.
I'll take our four cents, please.
Yes, please.
Jerry Finn, forty-seven Grove Street, this square, I heard you say thirty-three thousand square feet?
Yes.
And then I heard you say overoccupied on town-owned for seven thousand square feet.
Yes, and those are all approximate, yes.
So, the question I have is, are we talking to thirty-three thousand square feet, or are we talking? The issue we're talking about here, is it on the seven thousand or the thirty-three thousand, or is it seven part of the thirty-three thousand?
The seven is part of the thirty-three thousand. I can't say, based on planning board special permits or building codes or any of that, what portions of the property of the thirty-three thousand are really at issue for what they plan to do? I, I can't, I don't know that. But clearly, there is seven thousand, which has church, parking, and septic underneath.
Yeah, it's the back lot, yep. So, that I understand with the seven thousand, thirty-three threw me for a loop when you said it.
So, they want to make it more like, so this is the seven thousand right here, behind the building? So, this kind of just makes it a little bit more of a uniform space, so it's a little bit easier to
But they didn't purchase that thirty-three thousand, right?
No, but we could authorize.
Nor the seven, that's correct, they didn't purchase the thirty-three thousand.
The issue here is the seven thousand.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
All right, I was just confused when you said thirty-three, I said, whoa, whoa, what, where'd that come from?
The thirty-three was what was originally, the board in nineteen ninety-two was authorized to sell the thirty-three thousand square feet to the church. And that transaction never took place. And that thirty-three includes the overoccupied seven thousand, which has the parking lot and the septic.
Right.
But again, I, I couldn't tell you, because I don't know, if any of that extra line is critical to special permitting, building, septic types of things because of, you know, distances that are required and setbacks and things like that. So, I don't know that. But clearly, there's a problem that they have a parking lot on town-owned property, and it's, their septic is under town-owned property.
That's correct. But the building itself would have made up some part of that as well, correct? Because the church stopped before you even got to the, where the hall was. And then the land, as I understood it, was given to the town, and that included the, where, what used to be St. Teresa's? I mean, St.
Monica's Guild.
Yeah, thank you, Monica's Guild, thank you. Where that was, Peter, so, the, the building stopped there, and then I understood it that the land was given so that we were able to build out the, the hall.
I don't know.
Well, I'm, I'm just telling you, that's the way I understood it. Now, the, and that then would, would sweep up, you have a step-up situation there where it goes to the, it goes to the drainage system up top. And, and that's where the parking lot is on top of that. So, I, I thought the land was given from the edge of the church, out encompassed the entire hall, then it wrapped around and went up. And I understand clearly that town owns the hill coming down. That was done many, many years ago with Mr. Dean, so. It, it just, it just caught me off guard, Pete, when you said thirty-three thousand, I said, ooh, it sounds big to me.
Yes.
Relative to the seven thousand, which I thought, okay, that makes more sense, that's all.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you.
So, what was our arrangement with the church with the seven thousand square feet of land?
I think that was unknown until this surfaced, this deal surfaced.
Okay.
And so, the rights that the, the church could have enforced, that they were maintaining it and all that sort of thing, that didn't follow to the buyer, right?
So, paragraph five, you've, you've got to shoot from the hip, doll of figure here, that we have a do not cross thirty-five thousand, so.
Without having it to go to auction.
Thirty B, right?
Yes.
So, I guess, does it make sense to empower you to start to talk to legal or talk to a real estate agent and get a valuation? So, we know what we're looking at?
Well, you'd have to go to the assessors, I'm assuming, right, to get the evaluation?
Well, the assessors would give us
They give the land value.
They give the land value.
You
They give you market value, don't they?
They're pretty close, I mean, everything's comparative, but
Do we really want, well
You could at least look, is, and that's actually leading into that question, is this a separated parcel, or is it attached to another parcel? The seven thousand and the thirty-three? Is that its own?
That's all town-owned, that's the same town-owned parcel.
So, it's one parcel?
Yeah.
So, we'd have to divide the parcel before we even considered selling it? Unless we sell the whole thing, right?
Well, I think we have numerous acres, I don't know how many acres, twenty-eight acres or something.
So, that, but you'd have to, and then you'd have to try to, I don't know how to
Peel off this piece, yeah.
Yeah, because I don't know how you do it with the town doing it, but if you're trying to break off a piece, that's not a buildable lot on its own.
Correct.
You'd have to get special permits and all that sort of thing. So, that whole, raises a whole nother issue of how to break it up quickly.
Okay, well, I think we can, Peter, if you could look into what needs to be done for, to subdivide it, and then talk to the assessors about what they have for the value for now. And then we can talk, because this is going to be a long process, we have plenty of time, so.
Well, they, I don't think the assessors would have a value for, because it's a one
Their little piece.
Yeah, they wouldn't have that value, because they would, they just have the value of the whole
The whole thing?
Piece.
Then we can just do some straight math for like a rough and tough estimate.
I mean, yeah.
Right.
I don't know how it would work in this situation, but wouldn't it be a conflict of interest for us to evaluate our own piece of property?
Well, no, we wouldn't be evaluating, we'd just be looking at the records, because every town parcel is valued at something.
Has a value, right, right, right.
Yeah, so we have to keep those up to date, so we're just looking at that, and then we can guesstimate.
Yeah.
But the problem would be is dividing it.
So, you have a, an executive session, right, you're, you're having this discussion right now in open session. You can do it in executive if you wish, because there's a negotiating part to it that you may or may not want to preserve.
Personally, I, I think it's probably so small that
Yeah, I think just the subdivide, and then if we can get the value of the whole parcel, and then I'm just going to do some algebra.
So, I think to Andrew's point and your point is really more of market appraisal
Yeah.
is the more legitimate thing.
Just want to make sure that we have a number, so when we go to the town meeting, we have something to present to the taxpayers.
Yeah.
What I don't know is what exactly they need. Right, so I, I can reach out to their architect, surveyor folks and say, well, how much of this do you really need?
Sure.
And then we'll seek an appraisal, include that and your factoring of the value, the cost of that appraisal presumably.
So, we don't know what they want to use that parcel for, that's up the piece?
Probably the septic and the parking, right?
Yeah.
Is it the similar purposes?
They're already on it, they're already occupying it, so.
So, why don't we like do something like a temporary, like easement, so that they can use it temporarily before we actually
Well, that's the licensing piece that you could do, right?
Peter said they haven't asked for it yet.
Yeah.
So, what we need to know from them is what do they want?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Including specific space. What portion of that thirty-three thousand, if it's just the overoccupied or it's more? Because some of that more might be required for setbacks and all other things that some people in the room have to deal with otherwise, so.
They need to come forward with an ask.
Yeah, exactly.
Makes sense?
Okay, I'm going to move on. So, discussion of one seventy-nine Thayer Street property.
Yeah, so that's just informing you, the, the planning board last week, you know, approved this project and special permit, as well as, it's an open space residential development special permit and site plan review decision, and, and also stormwater management permit. And they voted affirmatively on both, and they're in process of signing those, I think, is my fair assessment. So, you, you can read, there's good information to read on this, just so you know. I think one of the issues that this permit cites is a size of a cistern for the fire suppression, and I think there's a difference from the fire chief to what's in here in terms of gallons of the cistern. So, that's an open item.
It's quadruple the normal last.
Yeah. Yeah, so I don't know if the math was correct on that or whatever. Well, I think you have fifteen in this, right?
Mine had fifteen, but I think they were going to go to twenty, no problem, then the chief asked for eighty.
Eighty, right.
So, that's something
He did some mathematics, but I don't know how he did it.
He did Millville math.
Yeah, cubic, you know, volume.
You almost want to laugh at that one, don't you?
And does he have the sole authority to determine or to require that, or can that be something that the planning
Yeah, so that's, I think that's a clarity yet to be done, that the planner is trying to work with the chief and the developer
Mathing isn't mathing over here.
To get them together. It is Millville math, though, yes.
It is.
It's mathing.
But wasn't there an issue besides the cistern with the piping to get the water up there? Was, I'm pretty sure there was, back in the day, that's why it was, like, Millville Estates was denied.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Isn't the
No, this is just for fire suppression, firefighting.
Yeah, this is the tank.
It's a big twenty-thousand gallon tank, and that the condo association has to maintain. And is going to allow, is going to allow, as a gesture, the chief to use it for anything in the area. So, it actually creates a very good coverage for all of Thayer Street, for having twenty thousand gallons of water at disposal for pump.
I thought fire suppression needed to be connected to like a well, not at all?
No, we don't want to touch the wall.
No, no, no.
The question to ask is, we're bringing all the water in from outside sources to not deplete the water table.
In the past, though, Andrew, I think your recollection is that, that there was a requirement to connect to the
Yes.
To the, the
Two miles away.
To the hydrant system, okay, and bring it up there and extra piping, when that development was going to be single-family homes spread throughout the thirty acres or so, right?
Apparently, that fire pump is not reliable, and that's a
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I was connecting, okay.
So, it's a totally different
Okay.
Yeah.
So, when this is moving forward, and we, there's no ask from us, just awareness?
Uh huh.
Right.
Okay. Aaron, questions, go ahead, Andrew.
Actually, one question, because when we were looking at this before, there was like a issue with the amount of, I think, what was it? The amount of people that would be possibly staying there, and
Seventeen units.
Yeah.
It's seventeen units, all two bedrooms, and there's no additions. So, you would be able to add bedrooms. To me, the benefit of that was minimizing the impact on the school system.
Wasn't, but with two bedrooms, you'd have over thirty.
It could be a public water supply, but they have to work that out with DEP, that's still an open item for this project, right?
And that's a contingency, if like they don't get that, this doesn't go through?
We don't have a hand in it.
Well, no, but I'm saying
Same thing with the, the DEP for the
Yeah, but I'm saying, it's, if they don't get the, from DEP, DEP, this gets denied, right? It gets revoked.
Our decision allows them to proceed, but there's, everybody else can still stop them.
Okay.
So, we're just the first gate.
Yeah.
Board of Health has to approve the septic systems and the wells, where they're locating them.
Yeah.
And if it is a public water supply, then DEP does have to get involved, but from what we know, it's not required. And they're planning on drilling individual wells per duplex. So, you're going to drill nine wells, nine holes instead of seventeen, and one shared septic system, which is really great.
I'm just wondering, it would have been wiser to put in a contingency in the plan? That way, you don't have to deal with the fact that it's approved, because that might complicate issues further down the road. Well, the contingency is based on these steps to approve. No, but once you, what I'm saying is, is if you put a contingency saying, if the Board of Health or building inspector, whatever, doesn't approve this, it gets revoked, it gets canceled, basically.
Kind of
Imp lied.
It's implied.
Yeah.
Implied, but not said.
Okay, I'm just wondering if they should have put that, okay.
I'm going to move on, okay. So, I was going to skip the Business Development Committee since Joe's not here, is that okay, or did anyone else have an update? Okay. Um, so, continuing to discuss of Halloween Fall Millville Day, so we have one final meeting on Wednesday, the twenty-third, at six-thirty at the library. So, I did reach out to a couple of business owners, I couldn't, I knocked on doors, but no one was at a couple as well. But if there are any business owners who want to participate, you're more than welcome to just come to the meeting on Wednesday, so we know. And Senator Fatman and Representative Soder will be there as well, because we have the new playground behind the police station. So, I just want to make sure that Kevin Del Gisze gets recognition, he was the main driver for that, and was able to secure the funding. Soder and Fatman were able to get us the earmark kind of reassigned. And Brian Malali and the Highway Department did a lot of work there as well. And then Chief Coop was able to get us resources to help clean up the park and things like that. So, just to make sure they all got their names in the record. But it should be fun, so the day is two to four on Saturday, the rain date will be Sunday. And I think that's about it. Is any, so I'm going to be there on Saturday and Sunday, but only for the first hour, because I have to go out of time, we'll have to figure that out. Does anyone else from the Board of Selectmen want to be there on Saturday or, or Sunday? Because if there's more than just two of us, then we have to postpone.
I'll nominate Joe.
So.
Probably be there Saturday.
Okay. All right, can you postpone just in case?
You've got to dress up, though.
As what?
A lawyer.
Oh, okay.
I have a cape.
You get to pretend.
It's a shark outfit, isn't it?
I have a cape and hat. Okay.
If you're hurt.
We're like way ahead of schedule.
Yes.
So, I, maybe we'll finish everything before we get to the solution at eight o'clock. There's public forum now, but I don't know if anyone wants to come, or I can, I can have it again at the end. Public forum, anyone, anyone? Okay.
I'm out of sense.
Okay, so for old business, MES Water status update and discussion-related issues, if any. Peter, what?
Well, so I was requested, or, you know, Superintendent DeFalco's wondering the latest status. I don't have the latest status, because DEP is evaluating the last quarter results and also some October testing, okay?
October's in?
Yeah, some of the testing is in, so, not DBPs, but coliform is reared an ugly head here in October. So, DEP is working closely with McClure on the data and what it means. And so, just to full disclosure, the test results for the year, you know, for the third quarter on the monthly testing of DBPs is in compliance, okay? But there's also one site, one faucet that's tested once a quarter. In the third quarter of this calendar year, it tested above the MCL for halooacetic acids, which skewed the results slightly above the MCL for the year. What I don't know is if that's a noticeable event, frankly, okay? So, I don't know that yet.
I'm talking your August and September results.
Yeah, so the August results, it's the August result is the one that's used in the measurement of four quarters of only four test results in that year, okay?
But if you do the average of all the months, it's below, so that's why we don't know which one they know it is on.
Require, I don't know that yet. Separately, coliform appeared in, in the October testing. And so, DEP and McClure are going back and forth about the, the, the pump that issues phosphorus and whether that plays a factor. The, the reliability of the ultraviolet lighting, which is really the key to killing the, the bugs that might cause coliform. So, that's, that's an evolving thing. So, anyway, Dr. DeFalco has a meeting, a school committee meeting on the fourteenth of November, for which we would hope to be able to give them the latest updates, including resolution of some of these things that I don't know at this stage. And so, I'm also going to ask McClure to come into your next meeting on the fourth, to give you an update of that, as well as where we're at, where they're at, working with DEP on the, you know, the grant and the use of the grant for PFAS mitigation is, which would also solve the DBP issues. A, a solution that Jen and I met with Mary Jude Pig, Pigsley, and she was very enthusiastic about, so. McClure will come in and talk about that.
So, Mary Jude said this would take care of the total organic carbons as well as the PFAS? So, because the issue we have right now is there's a lot of variability in the iron and manganese and total organic carbons, and it's, it's hard to balance everything and get it right. This, she's like, no, this, you'll be good on everything, and you'll be way ahead of the curve in terms of PFAS compliance, because that's going to be a few years out. Right now, the threshold is twenty parts per trillion. They're lowering that to four parts per trillion. And with this new technology that we're adding, we should be well, well below that. And then all the other factors should go away as well, so it seems like kind of a miracle. And I'm hopeful, but this has not been an easy road. So, but I, I will say, how excited Mary Jude was made me feel very good about it and, and really confident. So, and she was like, you're definitely on the right track with us, this is great technology, you'll be excited, and she's working with the McClure Engineering on the grant application, so. And she actually did us a really, a really big favor, she's like, you know, I know this system, she filled out the application for us as much as she could, and then gave it over to McClure Engineering to wrap up and check, and now they're going back and forth on the application. So, I appreciate that support from her and that alignment. Anything else on water? Yes, Jerry?
Just a question, if I may. Is there a date that we need to, I thought I read in the contract before, there was a date that we had to let Dr. DeFalco know, or the superintendent, whomever it may be, by the, I thought it was the end of January, if school was to be again put in place for the following September. I thought there was something in the contract, I may have misread it, but I thought that's how you read it.
We don't do any informing on that, the school committee is supposed to have a public hearing and vote before December thirty-first. But the Board of Selectmen has no role in that contract in moving at the students. So, they're looking for information from us, which we expect to have, that's why we're going to have McClure Engineering here on November fourth. Peter and I will do one more meeting with Mary Jude, and then we should have everything available to the school committee on the fourteenth.
So, we should by that time have the information necessary to quell any concerns they may have that we are aware of right now. And then go and be able to say, if that is the case, there's no reason why they should go and say, we're not going to let the kids in there next September.
Yeah, especially with the new technology that we're working on, for sure.
I mean, that, that would be our assumption, correct?
Yeah.
And I think I've heard from the other side multiple times that they are just as eager to get the kids back in that school as we are. So, my assumption would be, if you have everything checked and dotted, there'd be no reasoning why the kids couldn't go back as long as they're notified of said results prior to that. There'd be no reasoning why the kids couldn't go back as long as they're notified of said results prior to that. And that's what our intent is to do, correct? Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else in M E S Water? You'll all get your chemistry certificates at the end of the class. Um, okay, continuing to fire M E S Resource Planning. So I.
Yeah, no, I I thought we were gonna be, you know, uh providing a slideshow tonight and uh.
Chief Leard got called away on a fire, but I don't think he knew about the slideshow. Well, he didn't know until I spoke on Friday.
We can have it on the fourth.
Yeah, and I think they needed, they wanna do more sharpening of pencils and fact finding and so forth, so we'll see.
Announcements, if any, before I cover the Halloween.
No, no, I'll I'll cover some stuff in my Town Administrator Report that arguably could be announcement related.
So correspondence, Peter?
Oh, just uh great news, right? That you see in your packet. Um, the town was awarded fifty-one thousand four hundred dollars from uh. The Department of Energy Resources um through the Green Community Committee. Um to replace windows at the Old Town Hall. And this would not have happened without Kristen Foodie really picking up the ball, running with that very fast and hard. And she got, uh, you know, she met with Joe, they measured windows, quantified the numbers of windows, came up with. You know, the 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 information to put into this uh application. And Sarah Hooker helped with the process as well. So, you know, those folks did a great job. Again, led by Kristen. This is a huge, you know, huge win for the town.
Okay, I'm gonna skip minutes. We'll do those maybe at the end. So Selectmen Reports. So Andrew, anything your way?
Nope.
Matthew?
No.
Richard?
So as we go into the winter months and look towards the spring. I know that there was a comment from the town, the townspeople about Peter's performance evaluation. Will that be done before the next?
So I think we need to look at your contract, like what the deal is. We can. We can do a review for Peter for sure.
I figured we'd rip the Band-Aid off and get that done before we confront that again.
Yeah, that's fine. So Peter, if you can, should me and Brian Riley meet and talk about what the process is? Or should all of us meet with Brian Riley about the process?
I'll just look into it. It's in the contract. You're supposed to do it once a year.
Does the board meet in executive session?
I think that we do, yeah. Just, that's what's fair, I think. Okay. So Peter, thank you, Richard, for that. Actually, my um point was actually on something similar. So for the agenda. Um, if anyone wants to put anything on the agenda, like just let Peter know and he'll check with me. I don't think I've ever said no. Anything being on the agenda. But if you want something on there, just.
I kinda have a thought here. I I feel like. Sometimes, I mean, we're all busy, hectic lives. It's it's almost like Groundhog Day. Um, we miss things and then things are not carried forward or things that are carried forward, we've already discussed. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't um supplement this with a project tracking sheet. Where we, and I can provide a template. We start. Providing notes, we fill it out. When things are done, they come off the list, you know? Cuz I I feel like we're losing sight of of a few important goals.
Okay, sure.
So.
Great idea.
I like to just finish things.
Me too. I like to check boxes. That sounds great. Alright, so maybe on the next agenda item. Um, some project management discussion. Yeah, Richard is to to provide template.
I'll provide a template and I think if you'll see, you know, we we'll throw in some assignments, we delegate, we'll throw in some notes. And then as things are completed, they can fall off the sheet.
And then for me, just a reminder, Halloween Day on Saturday, two to four at the police station. So there'll be a. New playground and plenty of candy. I actually have quite a bit of candy for the Board of Selectmen table. Alright, Peter overdue for Town Administrator.
Sure, uh so the municipal aggregation, you know, the uh energy bills, the folks that are on the municipal aggregation, we have posted on the town website. A public notice about that as well as. You know, the in there is uh just a press release basically. But things are switching over essentially November first from the uh the prior contract that we were under for three years. Into a new contract for two years. The rate will be thirteen. Three five oh, point one three, three five oh dollars per kilowatt hour versus. National Grid sixteen cents per kilowatt hour. So. You know, it's favorable and it's locked in for two years. People can opt in. If people are in the program under the current contract, they're automatically included in this new one. Um, I believe notices are sent by the uh Colonial Power folks that we work with on this. Out to the residents. So it's just something to look forward to. It's uh and you can opt in or opt out without cost and with. Fair fairly straightforward ease. So um that's on the website. Some information on that's available there. You've already talked about the playground, which is great and exciting. The Old Town Hall, we just uh had someone out looking at the furnace to see what's involved as in terms of ease of starting it up. And that's kind of a key thing to know. It's unclear how easy it will be, so uh there's some evaluation taking place on that. At the same time. We're preparing the bid package for the actual structural repairs to the roof. And won't trigger that until we're clear in terms of what's involved with the furnace. You know, if it's a big deal, we'll come to you and you all figure out whether we wanna move forward. Likewise, we're sorting out the uh remediation of the mold, asbestos and lead and how best to proceed forward on that. And that also is, you know, there's a sequence to how we do these things, so. Um, just things are moving forward on that effort to repair and reuse the Old Town Hall and try to do it. As cost effectively as possible. You guys set aside two fifty of arpa funds. And that co- that's gonna go a long way towards what we think needs to be done here at this stage, but we don't know exactly. Nope, that's good.
Okay. So items not recently anticipated forty-eight hours prior to meeting?
Nope, I have nothing.
Okay, our next regular meeting will be Monday, November fourth. And when we come back to meeting minutes. So I didn't, I left my ones that we did last week at home. I didn't have any comments and I, these are, I'm act all okay, so. I don't know if it, we can start in order.
Well, Andrew.
Yeah, I haven't had the chance to read all of them, but the ones I did read, there were numerous things that would have to go through, so it might just be where better to. Give my notes to Peter about the corrections and we can get them later done cuz there's a bunch of them.
Okay, so which ones do you have notes on?
So November twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. November sixth, twenty twenty-four. And December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Number eighteen? Was the last one, twenty twenty-three?
December eighteenth.
Okay. So you have comments on all four of those? And did you look at the other ones?
Nope, didn't get a chance to cuz.
So you might have to take these up next time, but Andrew's gonna give me his input, right?
Yep. Okay, I didn't, yeah, I didn't see anything in the eighth. The ones from January third, but we can hold on.
I noticed one thing in the February fifth one is that it's twenty twenty-three, not twenty twenty-four.
I put that in there for Andrew, but you caught it.
It was on the front page, so.
It's funny, I always start here, like new business. I'm like, cuz I'm like, they get our names right.
So regarding correspondence, you wanna go back a bit? I'm just seeing these emails here that embrace packet. With the Public Safety Committee, did you wanna touch upon that? There seems to be some. Some heartburn with some of the.
We can go back up to departments, sure. We I we skipped it cuz there was, I thought people were gonna be here, but that's okay. We can certainly go back.
No, no, it seems like there's some heartburn here and and it seems as though there's a difference in opinion. So. Reading this email here, I think from the police chief. Like, the Public Safety Committee needs to find ways to increase the level of service. Find ways to cut expenses, which is very hard to do when you're trying to increase service, but. It seems like the the police chief might have a difference of opinion or.
So that email is from me. Chiefs. After we had. You know. Jim Foster here. So I I was just giving them that, you know, the the process, my my interpretation of the process of the Public Safety Committee. And, you know, poor Jim was on the spot here. I don't think he was ready to rumble, right?
Well. I think we threw one of the bosses to try to answer some. Questions, but he wasn't ready to present. There was a PowerPoint that we wanted him to present to make the pitch. The chief should have been here to say, okay, this is, this is where the direction should go. Because as chief, I feel this. And I I I think that's kind of what the point of this committee is supposed to be for. To get the chiefs to think, how do we improve the level of service? How do we? You know, how do we cut some costs? Anything we can do? And if not, I mean. There's always room for improvement.
Correct.
And so that's the exit, whether the Board of Selectmen accepted or not. It's, that's to be determined. But trying to get these folks to think as of the bo- and of course, we've stumbled upon things in the process that we we weren't aware of either. So it's been a learning, it's been a learning curve for all of us.
Yes. So there's a couple of things in here that, you know, uh I'm I'm working with the chiefs, if you will. So that, and and there is this Public Safety Committee and 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 separately, there was the conversation of moving towards A L S. And and that's. Kind of a separate topic in in at least the way I view it and. But not too separate. It's part of the overall big picture view. And and so just the clarity of the process of the Public Safety Committee and its involvement. In evaluating all of these things like you described. And then bringing that forth to the Board of Selectmen. To bring forward to voters for resources at town meetings and so forth. So. They weren't ready for the special town meeting.
No, they weren't.
So they really gotta get the the things pulled together for the, you know, the town meeting in May. Which really rolls into the bigger picture of um, you know, override, planning if any, or. You know, how to meet the needs of all of the demands for resources. So that's part of it. And then separately and more granularly in this email in your packet is. You know, back and forth with the Finance Committee Chair and the Fire Chief regarding uh authority to increase pay rates. And and it's subject to the Board of Selectmen approval in in its simplest form, you know? They 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 aren't effective until unless and until you all have approved them. So even as a strong chief.
So I I just kinda wanna defend this a little bit here. I'll touch upon this. I think as a resident and a- as a Board of Selectmen member, some things that stick out in my mind in the past year or two years that we've seen. Some folks have come in, they've demonstrated strongly either on behalf or against the Fire Department. You, we had some issues. We had firefighters, didn't respond to calls. Th- things were weren't quite kosher. Things weren't getting done. And I I just wanna say, I I I feel like this committee and myself dedicate a lot of time. To try to push this thing in a direction. I understand money's not going to solve everything. But I think we've made some big improvements. I, we have a long way to go. But we're trying to get there and I'm trying to get them to think about their operations and at least make a presentation here, so. No, 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 I know and I'm not, I'm 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 just making that a a matter of record. I just saying that. As neutral as can be, that there are problems. I think we all know there are problems. And. Just trying to get these chiefs to think about what's going on here, specifically the Fire Department.
Yeah, no, and I I think that committee and and your involvement, cuz you're pushing a lot of the. Buttons on on how things get done there. Has resulted, no, but it has resulted in additional. Coverage and better responses to needs from what I can tell even what Jim described briefly, right? If you compare, you know, prior years to current years, it seems like. They're responding better. I think the challenge is, the other new piece is the uh. You know, the mend in cost factor that's new. In this calendar year that wasn't there before. So the net. Contributions to public safety and general fu- stabilization and general fund. Will be a lot lower, I think, than we might have originally thought cuz we're writing checks to mend and. For the A L S calls, which then leads into your A L S long-term view discussion. I get that, but that. They have to be, you know, I use the word, they need to be more cogent. They, the chiefs in this sort of thing. To uh, cuz that that was a lot to absorb that Jim put forward. Dancing on his feet in part, but he had, you know, cheat sheets in the presentation that we have yet to see.
So if we're gonna be discussing chiefs and jobs and things like that, should there be an executive session component or give them that?
No, we're not ta- we're not really talking necessarily individual performance. If we were, we'd have to invite them here. I think you're talking more departmental. Operation and 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 effectiveness, right? And that's a resource. Need and allocation issue.
Department strategy, you know, we wanna increase level of service. And, you know, some some complaints were brought up that were in a matter of public session. And those are the things that are sticking points in my mind that were room for improvement. Those are the things that I wanna do now. I mean, they're the chiefs. They're supposed to be the experts in what they need for the department, so. What they present is is really their opinion. Whether we believe it to be right, wrong, or indifferent, it's their opinion as chiefs. And then I guess my other question is going to be um. Do we have a performance appraisal system for the chiefs?
You you all, under their contracts, are supposed to appraise them as well, so you really.
We are supposed to and we have not. And it's been, and it's been three years.
Two anyway. So that add that to the list of uh. Folks that need to be.
I think we need to look at those.
So maybe a discussion of the process, the review process at the next meeting, and that can be an open session. And the reviews themselves, we give, they are, they have the option.
Do we have templates that that can go out administratively by email to all of us to start reviewing?
We have, uh, the town does have a performance evaluation form that I think was there for. One of the chiefs in the past and, you know, it's a. I've used it, I I've adopted it when we. As a draft and worked with it for evaluation of our Executive Director at Medicom, for example. So there's something that exists, yes. That's a starting point.
I'd like to look at them.
Yeah, yeah, so we should, they should vary the packets next week. And then we can maybe talk about a schedule of when we do the reviews at the next meeting. Maybe like early January, cuz we'll have him.
Yeah, I think you're technically, your reviews of the individuals, including myself, would be in public. Not executive session.
I just wanna get that off our plate by the time we hit the April meeting. So that we have those in hand.
Nope, I agree. Okay, Jerry, you had a question?
Just a comment. I think I um, you should have received, uh Jerry Finn, Forty-Sixth Grove. Um, I I think you should have received um. Uh, something from me concerning uh B V T. Uh, Peter asked me if I would attend one of the uh safety meetings I had back in the late spring. Um, and then one of the concerns I had there was that they were not getting enough folks. To be able to get a pool together to see for the E M T service. And it was, uh, I guess, like getting hen's teeth. So net net on it is, um, we, myself and a gentleman from Douglas. Went to um Dr. Fitzpatrick and we said to him, cuz Douglas has the same problem. And he said, we really need some help with this. So Doc looked into it and indeed, they do have an E M T course. Uh, we put all horses on it immediately. And I'm happy to tell you, the um, the course actually started uh in September. Um, and uh it is full. Um, so they have a a source of some folks there. Uh, I gave the syllabus and the rest of it is on the email that I gave to you folks. You can see. Uh, the chiefs, perhaps Peter, could be, we look at some of those things and say, hey, this is good because. It'll give us the opportunity to have someone at a uh an opening position and you gotta pool the talent. I think there's twelve or fourteen people up there now. Uh, and this is an after, uh, this is an adult course. This is not a kid's course from the from the nine to twelve. So I think there's an opportunity there and they are now, um, but what I was heard today, they're almost full on the um January course. So you're getting some real good interest from people who wanna get into the E M T part of the business. We've got a need, I don't know, being an old salesman, I'm saying you got a need and you got some people. It seems like you can maybe uh connect there. My suggestion would be to connect quickly. Because I also heard that there were some other towns that were going, oh geez, this is great and everybody wants to jump in on it, so. I think it's an opportunity and it may be someone from our own town, who knows, that could go through the course, get the certification, come in. And at some point in time, help this town out. Uh, in in terms of being able to fill out some of those positions. Right now, from what at least I understood, there were some vacancies that they're trying to fill.
Yeah, so let me ask you before you run off. So the Fire Department has a a small list of some E M Ts. I I understand we've picked up one A L S individual. Uh, one paramedic that can offer advanced life support. Um, and I'd like to shift this department in that direction. Wh- what's your personal opinion, Jerry? If we, do you think we can? Wh- what's your personal opinion, Jerry, if we, do you think we can do a fundraiser? Do you think the town would have any interest, or the seniors have any interest on getting this department license for ALS? I mean, it's a substantial nut, but
Uh, my personal opinion is yes, um, I've I've talked to some folks about it. Um, I think, I can't, I don't know how you put a price on safety.
We have a fifty thousand dollar goal to outfit our rescue for advanced life support.
Yep.
And I think aging seniors would have, would have a real need for it.
I think if the presentation was such, if we spend this, we recoup this, this is what this gentleman over here was re- referring to.
Right.
I didn't, there was too many numbers and too many things floating around in my head, I'm going, whoa, 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 whoa. The world I came from, you spend a dollar, you get back a dollar and a quarter.
Right.
And that's kind of what we're, I think you can do here, and I think in a in a vision standpoint, it isn't year one. It may not even be year two, but it is there and eventually you'll get to that goal. And I don't know, that that break-even point, you know yourself, you have to know where the break-even point is all the time and measure it. And and do a constant measurement of it, so indeed, I think it's something that we should look at. You know what it is, it's the four-letter word we never use around here, plan.
Yeah.
It's a plan, and I think that that's an important thing to have for anything. Even if it doesn't work, it's at least a plan, we can follow something, not just spinning around in circles like we have been.
Well, what's interesting is is uh, we do have a medic on staff, but the medic isn't qualified without a licensure, so. It's um spending meals.
Yeah, I wanna say one last thing, if I may, if you look at that email that was sent uh from uh Doctor Connors up at B V T, um, in that syllabus and in the terms of of the guy who is actually teaching it. He does all the licenses for this, for the state of Mass. Probably not a bad guy to know, just my opinion, okay, but it's in that, it's in that email, you can see it buried in there.
Okay.
And he'll say, that's the gentleman who's teaching the course that we hired, that to do the course isn't guy who who does all the licenses, so.
So we can ask him some questions?
Well, I think you could probably do a lot of things, I think it's really a matter of someone needs to connect with him.
I mean, fifty thousand, I think i- i- it's a, it's a big number, I'm not even sure if it's really that high, but that's the number I've been given, so maybe
Outfit the rig?
Yeah, maybe he can zero in on that number, we're talking medications, things of that nature.
To be honest, that fifty thousand, that's that's not worried about, I'm more worried about the salaries, like the, that's what I think. And I agree, if we so, look, in three years, we're gonna break even, then we're gonna start making money. That's a nice business case, but it's, like, is it three years, is it four years, is it eight years, is it never?
That's, that's, well, I I, never is not a good word to use in my vocabulary, if if that's the case, don't even think about it, but I'm looking at it and saying, I don't know where that is. I think Andrew was the one who brought up, I I'm not sure I understand where it is, I didn't understand where it was, so once, once he gets an opportunity to picture that out, and I would check this reference with this gentleman I told you about, who's a licensed guy.
Yeah.
I mean, he could probably give you a lot of peeks under the tent that would help you to be able to maybe do some things to advance your cause.
Yeah. I, tha- that conversation we had the last meeting wasn't the presentation, we're supposed to have a
I understand, I I I was impressed, he had a lot of numbers and figures, I just couldn't sounded very good, but I just, I I couldn't follow.
We've made a lot of headway into your point, Jerry, that he he he's got fine tuning to make, I get that. Um, but we do have a medic on staff, my understanding, and I'd like to start moving in that direction.
Yeah, I agree, good.
So I did forward Jerry's email, E M T Moonlight Program is what you called it, right? Um, to to Roy, and Roy came back and said that they presented at the District Seven Chiefs meeting last week, so, uh, or their last meeting, so that's where the, all these towns might be competing for
Jumped on it like a back on a June bug, so you you got some And I'm thinking, if, I don't wanna be last in line here when we were first to talk about it.
Yeah.
That that, those days are over.
I I also did ask Roy to uh research, and he maybe your 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 contact might be helpful, just research what are the requirements of a town to be an ALS community in terms of you know, twenty-four seven and all that, and can you fill the things with part-timers the way Jim was talking?
There's a lot of questions, there's a lot of questions you ask, Peter, that you got an expert that can tell you yes, no, or maybe.
And the other piece was what they have to do to maintain their paramedic status, both in training and recurring activity, and one of the sources I have, which is not verifiable at this stage is that uh the individual paramedic has to go on two hundred calls a year or something. You know, in Millville, if you've got five full-time paramedics, uh, you know, that's a thousand calls a word, two hundred call a year.
So I'm sure, I'm sure that isn't
So that, your resource is key.
What I'm saying, I'm sure someone can say, no, there's a different view for that.
I think what the deputy chief had presented, well, he didn't get, he didn't formally present it, but what he talked about he discussed was that they wanna go to a part-time medic um employee model. And and what that means is that we would be borrowing paramet- paramedics that have fulfilled their full-time requirement in other districts. And they would come here to work extra hours, so I'd like to explore to see if we can share those calls with the other communities and use them in a part-time status here.
Thank you. Do you have one more thing?
Uh, yeah, just to follow up, Jerry, those are the questions that I was hoping we could, would have heard from the lieutenant chief. Was, can we get a head count on calls, if we could do twenty twenty-three year to date, twenty twenty-four year to date? Cause we're we're imagining, and no offense anybody, we're imagining these numbers, we don't know what the revenues are. To to uh Peter's point, how many ALS calls do we need to do a year to maintain status? And if we're not gonna hit that number, that three, that hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment per year isn't an investment, it's a donation. Um, so those are the things that, I know he didn't have a real presentation, he took it like a champ, but those are the things to
He did very well.
Yeah, I mean, everything's R O I, if you can't get your money back, don't put it in.
Agreed.
Alright, so I think we're all good discussion points, and we're like, we've been through the whole agenda of the executive session, it'll be done.
Good night, everybody.
So, good night.
That was a dimes word.
Um, alright, so I will make the three motions. Um, I move that the Board of Selectmen enter into executive session per Massachusetts General Law C thirty A twenty-one A three to discuss strategy relative to litigation. Including but not limited to Garden Wonders and D'Tomma versus Millville, where discussion of these matters in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town. I further move that the Board of Selectmen enter into executive session per Massachusetts General Law C thirty A twenty-one A three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the town, and the chair so declares, Firefighters Teamsters Union Local One Seventy. I further move that the Board of Selectmen enter into executive session per Massachusetts General Law C thirty A twenty-one A six to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body returning to open meeting only to adjourn. Looking for second, thank you, Andrew.
I wasn't gonna try, I figured you were on it.
Any further discussion? See none, we'll do a roll call vote, Andrew Elward?
Aye.
Matthew Mailey?
Aye.
Richard Bremlis?
Aye.
And Jennifer Gillis, aye.